Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone in tonight. Thanks for coming. Will you call the roll, please?
Bachman.
Here.
Henning.
Here.
Gorman.
Here.
Merkel.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Lieberman.
Here.
And Stevens.
Here. Okay, so the first up on our agenda today, we do have a special presentation that I'd like to make to Mr. Robinson who's here. So if you'd step up to the podium also. Well, as you know, here in Clayton, we have some citizen-led commissions that we have. The Planning Commission, the Board of Zoning Appeals, our parks. And those are very important to keep in our city running on a day-to-day basis. These commissions work with the council and with our staff, but they also work independently. So we, you know, we rely on the members there to act independently and with good judgment. And Ricky Robinson has done that with the Planning Commission. He's not only a faithful member, but also leadership, the chair of the committee. Leadership was just fantastic throughout your tenure. So just wanted to say on behalf of the city, behalf of our staff, our council here, all of our residents, thank you, sir. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
And hopefully you'll hang that up somewhere where you can allow it to be seen. And we're proud of you, proud of the work you've done, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, and so we're going to move to our clerk's report.
You have before you the council meeting minutes of March 17th, 2022.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Okay, move to approve the minutes as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Bachman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so we are gonna veer off of the agenda just a little bit. We do have the need for an executive session tonight, and we're gonna, we're gonna place it in position right now because it involves some legislation that we're gonna be bringing on later in the agenda, so we wanted to be able to talk about that now. So I'm gonna ask, we want you to stay, but we're gonna ask you to leave. We'll ask our visitors to leave, at least for the, you know, you can come back, of course, but we will be, we'll be in executive session. So is there a motion that we go into executive session?
I'm sorry, ma'am. We need to state the reasons.
I move for short executive session.
I'm sorry. Okay, so we have, we're going into the executive session to discuss three things. One is the appointment of a city employee. The second is a-
Official, I'm sorry.
City official. The second is negotiation, discuss negotiations of one of the bargaining units. And the third concerns our economic development. So is there a motion?
I move for a short executive session.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gorman for an executive session, second by Mr. Merkel. Have a roll call, please.
Bachman.
Yes.
Henning.
Yes.
Gorman.
Yes.
Merkel.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Lieberman.
Yes.
Stevens.
Yes. Okay, so, sorry. Thanks for coming in, Ricky. Yeah, quick. It's a quick, quick one.
Okay, I believe Tim has made a motion to come out of executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bachman. We have a roll call, please.
Bachman?
Yes.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lieberman?
Yes.
And Stevens.
Yes. Okay, we are back in regular session and we will continue on with our agenda.
I move to untable Resolution 032226, a resolution appointing blank to the Planning Commission to complete an unexpired term.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Henning to remove that ordinance from the resolution from the table, seconded by Mr. Gorman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I move to nominate Mike Greer to the Planning Commission to complete an unexpired term.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Henning to nominate Mr. Greer for the open position, seconded by Mr. Gorman. We have a roll call, please.
Bachman?
No.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
No.
Kelly?
No.
Lieberman?
No.
And Stevens.
No. Okay, so we needed four yes votes on that to nominate Mr. Greer, so that, we did not get that. Is there another nomination?
I move to nominate Kim Williams for the position on Planning Commission.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Bachman made the motion to nominate Kim Williams for the open position, seconded by Mr. Lieberman. Can we have a roll call, please?
Bachman?
Yes.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
And Kelly?
Yes.
And Lieberman?
Yes.
And Stevens.
Yes, and let the record show that was unanimous. Okay, so we'll welcome Kim Williams to the Planning Commission. And we have some new business. Will you read the first ordinance, please?
Ordinance O-042208, authorizing the creation of two incentive districts in connection with the Hunter's Path development within the city of Clayton, Ohio, declaring improvements to certain real property within such incentive districts to be a public purpose, describing the public infrastructure improvements to be made to benefit or serve the real property within such incentive districts, declaring such property to be exempt from real property taxation, requiring annual service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund, and providing related authorizations pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Sections 5709.40C, 5709.42, 5709.43, 5709.832, and 5709.85, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Kings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. As you guys are all familiar with, this is the Hunter's Path project on the northwest corner of Westbrook and Union Road. As they discussed in their application before Planning Commission and City Council for the original zoning, they did come before, or they have introduced, and we've been working with their bond council, with our TIF council, and the school district on proposing a TIF district. At the last, I'm sorry, two meetings ago, you guys approved the overlay district as well as economic development plan for this specific TIF. So everyone was aware that this was coming. The particulars are in the agreement that are before you, but staff does recommend approval for this TIF so we can get that project moving forward.
Any questions for Jack on this?
Jack, just one, it has declared an emergency. Why, why do we need to declare an emergency?
Because the contract with the developer and the landowner had a timeframe and we're coming up on that timeframe. So this will enable them to be able to close quickly within their contract.
Yeah, Jack, I have a question. Excuse me. Are we to expect that every development we have, we are going to create a TIF for? And my next question is, if we're going to pay for all the infrastructure, why don't we do it ourselves and make the money selling the land, too? I mean, we're talking about a TIF on the thing we put the edge grant in for already. And, you know, we don't have the approval yet.
So to answer your first question, I don't think, long-term, I don't think staff will be in full support for TIFs on every single project that comes forward. I think in order to spur development in the city where development's been stagnant, we do need to do certain things in order to kickstart development, in order to get the ball rolling down the street. TIF is a mechanism that a lot of communities that are growing across the state and across the United States do. It does enable infrastructure improvements. The reason that, you know, the city doesn't put the infrastructure improvements on ourselves is quite frankly, we don't own the land. We're not the developer. This enables, and we're not paying for it. I mean, the taxes that are being generated from the improvements, from the investment that the developer is doing on that particular property is creating the resources in the TIF account that is then paying for those utility improvements. Without that developer coming in and doing that project, the resources won't be there to do those necessary improvements. This enables so that the city doesn't have to take on additional debt responsibilities and that we don't have to pay for it out of our resources. We're paying for it from resources that are generated from the investment from the developer. And that's the whole mechanism. That's the reason it's such a great development tool.
Well, when is the taxes for the development, when do they change from where they are right now, Jack?
It's from the auditor, I believe it goes on. I think it's two years.
Three years, I think.
I think it's two. I think it's two years, yeah. And that's, and that's built into the formula. And that's the reason why Kevin Schreiter, the Finance Director, obviously everyone knows that here. Kevin is in every single TIF meeting with us and Kevin's running the numbers with the developers, financial people, as well as the school finance people so that everyone makes sure that, you know, everything's being covered and that the city's not being put in a position to have any type of liability.
Because I know we've had a lot of development in the city where no TIFs were involved.
Correct. And when was the last, the last significant project?
Only TIF we had some time back was North Clayton. That was the first one I remember in the city of Clayton.
And it wasn't a tool that was used very frequently here in the city of Clayton. Main Street had, I believe, six or seven individual TIFs where all the new buildings went up, in which, if you remember, three years ago, we consolidated all those TIFs together and expanded along North Main Street, which is going to be able to provide the city the opportunity to do infrastructure improvements long-term along North Main Street. But there was-
First one was North Clayton.
And I'm not sure about the timeframes, but there was five or six right along North Main Street for all the different buildings that were along North Main Street. I would say, you know, from a staff perspective, that's one of the reasons why the city of Clayton hasn't developed as quickly as it could have was because we weren't taking full advantage of some of those economic tools that are available to us via the state and different legislation authorities.
Kind of piggybacking on what Tim, Tim's idea there. In your conversations with other communities and all the developers and all the people you talk to, I mean, isn't, aren't just about all the projects TIFed now?
Almost all of them now that are happening are being TIFed because the economics of these projects only make sense for everyone involved if there's some sort of abatement. For us, it makes sense because they're such a minor part of our budget that is derived through property taxes. The majority of our budget is done through income tax. So that piece of property that just sits there, it's not generating any more additional property tax if it just sits there undeveloped. If it's developed, now it's creating more revenue for us because people are moving in and now we're creating more opportunities for income tax. That's the benefit for the city. We're also able to put, infrastructure's able to be put in because when the city wouldn't have been able to afford to. This particular project's going to extend sanitary and possibly gas down Westbrook closer to our last piece of land that's been identified for industrial that sits, it sits between Union, Westbrook, and Salem Avenue. It's a 63-acre tract. It's that massive blocked piece of land. And it's bringing utilities closer to that intersection because of this particular project. Whereas, because on this particular project, I think that particular line is like 300 feet down Westbrook, that they're having to extend to this residential site. Now it's a whole lot closer to that other site that's just been sitting there that's been for sale for 20, 30 years. That's had no, I mean, no movement at all. So now we're bringing utilities closer. Those are all, you know, those are different tools in the toolbox that all the different jurisdictions across, not just Montgomery County, through the state and the nation, are using now in order to entice development. There's some communities that don't do it. But honestly, if you look at the communities that don't do it, they're not having significant improvements or significant projects in their jurisdictions.
I personally would like to see us continue to be aggressive and be, be open to using all the tools. Because it is competition, believe it or not. You know, I mean, these cities like us are in competition with other cities. And if they throw out a better package or a better incentive package to say, you know, we're just not going to get it.
Jack, I agree with the income tax part of it, but two out of the three of these developments that we've TIFed are to attract empty nesters and elderly people, at which point in time we receive no income tax because we'd only receive income tax on earned wages, I believe. That's the way it started. Now, if that's been changed, I don't remember it, but-
No, and I think you're correct, but also, it was also to attract young professionals, too, in those communities. And one of those projects was denied. The only one that has moved forward, that was-
For adults, it was empty nesters.
It was empty nesters and young professionals, which, grand traditions is for empty nesters and retirees, but they're also targeting young professionals, too. And again, that's to get people into our community that see the benefits of living in this great community. So why, you know, they're young professionals and as they're growing their families and they want to stay in the community. I think the TIFs are a balancing act. Amane and I have had that discussion quite a bit. You know, I mean, we don't want to TIF every single project long-term. We want to be able to get to a point in the communities that are really, really successful, this is how they start. They start by incentivizing things. And then you get to a point that you don't have to incentivize because the incentive to be within your community is that. It's to be located in your community. That is the incentive. So then we don't have to TIF anymore. But we have to get the ball rolling. And these are why the tools are there. And Amane and I have discussed it quite a bit. I mean, long-term, I mean, we don't want to be having to do tax abatements all the time. But the reality is, for the foreseeable future, it makes sense. And I think what you'll see here in the next couple of projects, fingers crossed they come through, the structure of those TIFs are going to be different. That we're not looking at doing 30-year TIFs anymore. We're going to be looking at doing shorter-term TIFs. Again, that is very strategic that Amane and I have discussed, getting the ball rolling and then, all right, now how do we adjust that? And now we're starting pairing it back. And then eventually, we don't have to do it. Again, everything, you know, you guys hear me all talk about all the time. It's being strategic, having a plan, implementing that plan. And that's what we're doing right now.
We're playing the long game, is what we're doing.
So when you say TIFs, on a short-term basis, you say five years is what you're shooting for?
I think what you're going to see is your traditional 10-year, 75% TIFs.
Any other questions or comments?
Do I need to re-close myself on this one?
Yes.
Just one, one more question. The schools are okay with this?
I apologize. The school did approve this already, two meetings ago.
On the February 14th.
February 14th, okay. Yes. So, yeah, it, it was March 14th. Yes, so they've already approved this.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion for the emergency.
Second.
Motion to adopt by emergency by Mr. Merkel, second by Mr. Lieberman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstain.
Can we take, yeah, can we take a roll call?
Yep.
Bachman?
Abstain.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lieberman?
Yes.
And Stevens.
Yes. And is there a motion for the actual ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lieberman and second by Mr. Gorman. I think it was, was it him or was it you first? It's one of you. To adopt as written, so we'll have to do a roll call again.
Bachman?
Abstain.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lieberman?
Yes.
And Stevens.
Yes, and let the record show that that was unanimous. Thank you. And will you read the first resolution, please?
Resolution R-042228, a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept the bid submitted by and enter into a contract with Wagner Paving Inc. for chip and seal project with 3/4-inch asphalt leveling on Reinhardt and Old Mill roads at a cost not to exceed $171,232.95.
Mr. Sanders?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is part of our budgeted paving allowance. We were planning on doing Reinhardt and Old Mill roads on chip and seal. We wasn't sure how the prices were going to come in and we had it estimated $190,000. It did come in under budget, which doesn't happen with anything this, this year for some reason. So it was a very good price and it was a $47,000 savings over actual paving of that road. So we've had good luck with the chip and seal on Haber in those two locations. We've done it. And Reinhardt and Old Mill roads are very, very minor travel and it should work out well out there.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that's unanimous. And will you read the second resolution, please?
Resolution R-042229, a resolution authorizing participation in the ODOT road salt contracts awarded in 2022.
Hard to believe we're still hauling salt from this year, but this is already for next year. We have to get the, this done every year to get the approval to go into the ODOT salt contract.
I'll move for approval. Did we use much salt this year?
We were well under what we were supposed to haul this year. So I think we were 600 tons under what we had budgeted for. We're hoping to get another 200 in. That'll leave us about 465 tons short, so.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Henning to accept as written, second by Mr. Gorman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that's unanimous. Thank you, sir. And will you read the third and final resolution, please?
Resolution R-042230, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute and file applications on behalf of the city of Clayton for aid in financing the cost of improvement projects pursuant to the Economic Development Government Equity Edge Program, to execute agreement authorizing the city to perform all acts and through the city manager and finance director, to execute all documents necessary to fulfill the city of Clayton's obligations under said grant applications- to execute all documents necessary to fulfill the city of Clayton's obligations under said grant applications and corresponding agreements, and to comply with all relevant local, state, or federal legal requirements and to provide assurances and additional information as required.
Thank you, everyone. So this is for a project that staff has submitted to Montgomery County. This project is an $80 million project, potentially creating 100 new jobs with a payroll of approximately $7.5 million annually. This project, staff has been working with Montgomery County Jobs Ohio and Day and Development Coalition. It is located up on Salem Avenue. The timeframe for this particular project really became, it was a time crunch, really only came online a few weeks ago. The edge application was due last Friday. In consulting with our law director and Montgomery County, Montgomery County stated that it was not a requirement to have legislation in order for us to apply. Ms. Dillon recommended that we come before you tonight just to get the legislation in place, just to cover the city. But what this resolution is, is giving, it's giving staff the authorization to apply for that particular grant. That particular grant is a joint application with the city of Vandelia for the same project, and it is requesting $375,000 from the edge committee.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gorman, simultaneous seconds by Ms. Kelly and Mr. Henning.
National bakery comes to our sweet city.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so that passed unanimously also. So thank you for that and good luck on that. Hope we, hope it does bring some prosperity to us all, so. Okay, so the city managers' report, Amanda?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will keep it brief. Just a reminder that we have our Easter egg hunt this weekend at 9:30 a.m. sharp at Meadowbrook. The Easter Bunny will be there. So bring your baskets, come out, see everyone. It'll be rain or shine. So if it's snowy, we will have a snowy Easter egg hunt on Saturday morning. But it'll be fun for everyone. And just a reminder also that Sweet Clayton Clean is coming up Saturday, May 21st, from 8 a.m. to noon. We are back to pre-pandemic operations with that. So people will be there to help unload. We'll have the wood chipper there. And it'll still be at 200 Woolery Lane, which is the old fire station 83. Just a reminder that we do still have two open boards or two seats on boards. For the BZA, there is an open seat. And then also, the salary commission for BZA, applications are being accepted through April 11th and the salary commission April 18th. So if you have any nominations of your own, or if there are any residents who would like to participate, they can submit applications, or resumes, I'm sorry, to me or Jack or Barb, and we will get those to council. And then finally, this is very exciting news, the city took over complete operations of Meadowbrook April 1st. We have, I think, 45 events booked for this year already. We had a total of 37 last year. We have 45 already booked for this year. So we're already getting off on a good start. There are now refreshments in the pro shop, so you can come in and get, you know, refreshments before you go out and golf. And the snack bar will be open May 1st with sandwiches and refreshments there as well. Attached to your city, or to the city manager's report was also the spring rates for Meadowbrook. So please share that. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Any questions or comments for the city manager?
Yeah, I have one. Who's the cater for the grill?
We are using Rich Taste Catering. They are the ones that are bringing in the sandwiches and things like that. We don't have an actual caterer. So if you know of someone who wants to have an event at Meadowbrook, they are, as you remember, are able to bring their own caterer.
So I booked an event this week, our 45th reunion. So, yeah, so it's not until November, so we'll see. I'll be a critical customer.
Who's 25th reunion from North Mine is it, Mike?
Smart aleck. Okay, is that it? Okay, thank you. Is there any visitors, comments? We only have one visitor. Any comments? All right, well, we're happy to see you back. We didn't run you off the last time, it looks like, so. Yeah, we see you taking notes, though, so. Okay, appreciate you coming. Council, we'll start with Mr. Bachman.
We shouldn't even be meeting because it should be a national holiday, so I'll move to adjourn. No. One thing I want to comment on is, a couple of weeks ago, we had the luncheon for the Chamber of Commerce. It went really well. We were very well represented. Mr. Kuntz did a very good presentation on what's going on in the city and the future. Really, I can say that, you know, of all the presentations, this community is in very good shape and is going to continue to grow all over the North Mine area. Everyone was very happy to hear when we announced the improvement of the Wanger and Hoke intersection. That got the, kind of the most, ah, there. I thought about asking, hey, it'll go quicker if everyone chips in. Probably, that probably would have gotten some jeers. But, and also after, after that, I'm just walking up to the parking lot, I saw Amanda Fritz was in her office and went in, spoke to her. She is very excited about, you know, about the beginning of the position. And so really looking forward to, you know, I know it's already started, but I think we're very blessed to have someone already with a lot of, you know, with her experience and the experience at that facility and everything. So I think we're in really good hands with her. So that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Henning?
I also wanted to thank Angie for putting on a really nice luncheon for the chamber to have their annual review. And it was nice having it at Meadowbrook. North Mine Catering did a nice job. And it was, I heard a lot of comments from attendees as to how nice the facility was. So that's always nice to share. I wanted to thank Ricky Robinson again for his years on the Planning Commission. He did a good job with that and his service was appreciated. And then finally, I will say, it is election season, believe it or not. And early voting does run this week until Friday, tomorrow, 8 to 5. And then next week, 8 a.m. to 5 p.m. But for the full schedule of early voting here in the state of Ohio, you can visit voteohio.gov. You can also send in your absentee ballot requests. And the Board of Elections will get that processed. The Director of the Board of Elections is a fellow Clayton resident, and him and his team are doing a fantastic job down there. So that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gorman?
I have nothing this evening, sir.
All right. Mr. Merkel?
As already said, I would like also to thank Ricky Robinson for the work and contribution to the city over these past years. Also want to thank Randy for your assistance that you gave me on Friday when I called about a most unfortunate raccoon. I took pictures for you. But when the storms went through last Wednesday night, our house, our neighborhood was affected. And having to make alternative housing location for the next night because we didn't have power for 22 hours. So getting my 93-year-old dad out of the house in someplace where he can get warm was paramount. But the one unfortunate little victim was a poor raccoon. And Randy did come to my aid as far as helping me determine what to be done with that. And I have a picture for you.
Well, thanks, Greg, and thanks, Randy, for that, too. Tina?
Oh, nothing to add.
Dennis?
I will echo my thanks for Ricky Robertson's service and also will say ditto to Tim's "I have nothing further."
Well, I'll say ditto to Ricky also. I appreciate his leadership and his service to the city as everyone who serves on these boards. And again, just like I try to mention every time I get the opportunity, I want to say thanks to our staff and to our council for keeping this, you know, keeping everything moving forward and keeping our heads above water. It's a struggle every day, but we are in good shape. We're going a good direction. And I think if we stay focused and stay the course, just can't say enough. I just think we're really looking for some excellent things to happen in the short term and the long term. So thanks, everybody, for that. So is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Merkel. We are adjourned.